Good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Kettering City Council. Today's date is February 27, 2024. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads. Dear Lord, we pray for unity. We have come together as a group united in passion and purpose. Help us maintain unity as we discuss certain matters and implement projects. We pray for open hearts and minds that will promote and accept better ideas. We seek your honor in everything we do and say, and we ask for your blessings for our community and for all who need our prayers and assistance. Mrs. Fisher has an excused absence this evening, and I would like to recognize our Miami Valley Communications Council TV operator, Mike Soprani. Mike, thank you for your assistance. Let's see, Mrs. Fisher is not here to approve the minutes, so I guess that means Mr. Sullivan.
Your Honor, I have reviewed the January 23 workshop minutes, which had an amendment, a date correction. I have also reviewed the February 13, 2024 council meeting minutes and workshop minutes, and I find them in order. I move for approval.
Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, call the roll.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Sudif?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes. Okay, we have an appointment this evening. Well-known personality around here, I don't think he's here. This is for the Personnel Board of Appeals, Mark Schwederman, for a term ending 12/31/24. We have a second appointment, Civil Service Commission, also for Mr. Schwederman. I think this is the classic, don't forget to not show up for a meeting because you're going to get appointed to something. But Mark is going to be serving on that as well with a term ending 12/31/25, and we need a motion to approve him.
Motion.
It's been moved.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, are there any opposed? If you're watching out there, Mark, congratulations. We now have a special presentation for you this evening. If you didn't know it, tonight is the night of the state of the city, and who's in charge of it? Mrs. Schrift.
We're Kettering. We're a community named to honor the legacy of Charles Kettering, a trailblazer in innovation. Because of him, we committed nearly 70 years ago that our city would be founded on progress. We are 57,314 residents strong with over 1,000 healthy businesses, beautiful neighborhoods, and countless programs and amenities to support exceptional quality of living. My name is Peggy Lehner, and it is my honor to serve alongside city council members Vice Mayor Jackie Fisher, Bob Scott, Lisa DuVal, Jill Hall, Brian Sudif, and Shane Sullivan. At the end of 2023, we bid farewell to longtime council members Tony Kleipas and Bruce Duke. Many thanks to all who serve and their dedication to our community. As elected officials, we are excited to be part of the extraordinary work that the city of Kettering employees do to ensure our community continues to evolve in ways that make it a place you are proud to call home. A healthy home is important, strong, welcoming, and comfortable, and our employees work hard to offer these characteristics throughout our city. We're Kettering. Businesses, residents, and patrons collaborate with city leaders because we care for one another, and we will never stop listening to your feedback. Let's get a closer look as we present the 2024 State of the City.
We're Kettering. Of course we keep you in the loop. At the end of 2023, Greater Dayton RTA launched Route 28, which is a non-stop loop taking passengers east and westbound from County Line Road to Southern Boulevard along Dorothy Lane and Stroop Road. Every 40 minutes or so, the bus will have made the full loop. This wonderful new offering gives access to those who may need to visit Kettering Medical Center, shop at Town and Country, workout at the Kettering Recreation Center, or attend events at the Charles Lathrum Senior Center. There are parks along the way, as well as restaurants and the renovated Rosewood Arts Center. The loop is so centralized that it makes for a short walk to the things that might not be directly on the route. Kettering also makes sure residents and business owners have anytime access to our information loop. This includes reports of city happenings, events, emergencies, road construction, improvements to local infrastructure, and initiatives like electric aggregation. We encourage you to follow us on social media, bookmark our website, read your quarterly contact with Kettering Magazine, and subscribe to our monthly newsletter and Code Red Emergency Contact System. Fiscal transparency is as important to us as it is to you. Our government portal on our website is a fantastic place to see how your tax dollars are being utilized and the prudence with which we allocate them. For the 40th year, the city's Finance Department received the Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting.
We're Kettering. Of course we promote economic growth for the health of our community.
Tax revenue generated from jobs and payroll supports the infrastructure, facilities, and services that our residents and businesses treasure. In the end, our goal is to protect the investment that you made when you decided to call Kettering home. That means we invest in our commercial centers to support job growth while also investing in neighborhoods and world-class amenities. Thanks to the efforts of the Community Development Staff, a community reinvestment area was designated for homeowners in the Aragon Oak Park neighborhood. Property owners in this neighborhood are eligible to receive property tax incentives for investing and making real property improvements in their home. This program is designed to spur reinvestment of existing housing stock and encourage new residential development to revitalize our neighborhoods. The Community Development and the Economic Development Team partnered again in 2023 to assist numerous small businesses through the Micro Enterprise Assistance Program. This program provides technical business services, networking opportunities, and forgivable loans to eligible Kettering businesses. In total, almost $90,000 in forgivable loans were awarded to 10 businesses. Funding was used for equipment, inventory, fixed assets, marketing and business promotion, or other necessary business improvements. Support of businesses is important to city staff and leadership. We were pleased to see at least a dozen new businesses open their doors in 2023, and we are on track to exceed that number this year. During the past year, we also experienced reinvestment and utilization of previously vacant sites and new expansion projects at commercial sites. Jimmy John's redeveloped a former Thai restaurant on Wilmington Pike. TJ Chumps is now located in the former Hawthorne Grill site. Five Grain Noodle Company just opened where Chop Suey once stood, and Nova Trampoline Park is coming soon to the former Mark's Grocery Store on Whip Road. In addition, we've seen Coach Ken's Training Center renovate a building on Barney Avenue, while Town and Country has seen redevelopment projects with Panera, Ross Dress for Less, and an expanded Bath &amp; Body Works. The city has also seen redevelopment with the expansion at Kroger's on Stroop and at other locations at all corners of our city. The city continues to work with businesses, developers, and other stakeholders to bring new investment to Miami Valley Research Park, Kettering Business Park, and the Wilmington Corridor. We expect to see significant new investment at those sites this year, resulting in more jobs and a stronger tax base for Kettering. The City of Kettering remains committed to acting as a catalyst for reinvestment along Wilmington Pike, for both economic purposes and the impact the corridor has on our residents. The Wilmington Pike Corridor is a backbone in our community, and its vitality is central to the strength of our commercial success. If you have a project you'd like to explore along Wilmington Pike, or frankly, anywhere else in the city, please call our Economic Development Office at (937) 296-2412 to discuss new opportunities for grants and incentives that could be available in 2024.
We're Kettering. Of course we maintain and improve systems and infrastructure.
The city's top priorities include capital improvements, sustainability, a healthy living environment, and maintaining programs that help our residents and business owners. The Capital Improvement Program continues to be an area of emphasis for city council. Several capital improvement projects were completed during 2023, meeting the goals set forth in the plan. The City of Kettering Engineering Department manages the implementation of the Capital Improvement Program as it relates to streets, drainage, sidewalks, and bridges. The proposed 2023 CIP outlay was $10.5 million, of which $2.4 million was funded by outside grants and reimbursements. Three significant projects are assigned to Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Arts.
One, two, three, cut the rhythm!
Thank you, everybody!
The completion of the Rosewood Arts Center renovation project was highly anticipated and celebrated at the end of 2023. The renovation is the culmination of community and stakeholder feedback, as well as surveys conducted over the past several years. In addition to upgrades to the building's infrastructure, the project includes the creation of more efficient and customized learning environments for various artistic disciplines. It provides expansion of educational space for core program areas including youth art instruction, ceramics, painting and drawing, and specialized spaces for glass and metal working. The estimated $6.4 million project includes approximately $2.1 million from a fundraising campaign through the Kettering Parks Foundation and a $450,000 grant from the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission. After two decades of waiting, ground was finally broken on Gentilly Nature Park during the summer of 2023. Kettering's new $2.48 million park will transform 19 acres of the former Gentilly Air Force Station into a unique community asset, prioritizing health and environmental conservation for an underserved neighborhood. The nature park playground, zipline, bike trail connection, and walking path promote accessibility while honoring WWII ace Major Dominic Gentilli's legacy on site, ultimately filling a recreation void. Tree planting and green space strengthen Kettering's canopy and open enjoyment of the outdoors. Responding to increasing interest, Kettering Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Arts Department expanded and transformed the John and Betty Meyer Pickleball Courts at Kennedy Park into a premier 12-court complex with dedicated courts for all skill levels. The $370,000 project delivered on accessibility, funding innovation, and enthusiastic demand, immediately drawing regular capacity crowds across generations to maximize this flourishing recreation asset.
We're Kettering. We offer something for everyone.
During 2024, efforts will focus on maintaining and improving current infrastructure. One of the first projects underway in 2024 is Golf Club Estates Phase 1 Storm Sewer Improvements, where undersized storm sewer pipe is being replaced. Work on the West Avenue Bridge will begin in the first quarter of 2024 with a pedestrian-bicycle bridge constructed at a later time. Other projects include asphalt overlay, curb, sidewalk and drive approach repair, concrete repair, ADA curb ramp replacement, East David Road improvements, West Stroop sidewalk improvements, Danube Court Bridge rehabilitation, Miami Valley Research Park Bike Path, and Wilmington Pike and Wingview Lane drainage improvements. When all is said and done in 2024, 11.5 miles of street will be paved, concrete roadway, curb, sidewalk, and/or drive approaches will be repaired in two neighborhoods, and 140 kindergartners will complete the Safety Village program. Kettering was successful in acquiring $310,000 in state funding for East David Road improvements from Far Hills to Ackerman, and $1.8 million in federal funding for Dorothy Lane resurfacing from South Dixie Highway to Hague Avenue. The City of Kettering is committed to incorporating environmentally sustainable practices and initiatives through active research, education, discussion with residents and business owners, and continuous review of emerging technology and best practices. The appointment of a 12-member Sustainability Committee at the start of 2023 resulted in the recommendation and approval for Kettering to join Power a Clean Future Ohio, an in-depth review of sustainability efforts in comparable municipalities, interviews with department directors to assess current sustainable practices and record future goals, the formation of subcommittees for deeper analysis of data to support recommendations for 2024 and beyond, and the contribution of feedback relevant to the strategic planning process. Dayton Regional Green, led and organized by Montgomery County, awarded the City of Kettering a 2023 Sustainability Award for the establishment of a Sustainability Committee. Awards were given to local organizations and municipalities making positive strides towards sustainability. As part of the city's efforts to seek ways to be sustainable, you are encouraged to participate in the regional Bring Your Green Challenge. Your participation provides free access to online web-based reporting tools to track energy, waste, and water usage, and calculate the environmental impact of your sustainability efforts. To make the experience more fun, you can join teams and participate in a variety of challenges that encourage sustainable lifestyle choices through education, games, and engagement. You can learn more and sign up at BringYourGreen.com. During 2023, several internet service providers began installing infrastructure throughout the city's right-of-way to provide fiber-to-the-home options for residents. Additionally, the city's partnership with Alta Fiber, formerly Cincinnati Bell, was further implemented to provide more connectivity for residents and visitors through high-speed public Wi-Fi. Under terms of the five-year agreement, Alta Fiber will provide a state-of-the-art, fiber-enabled Wi-Fi network at Freys Pavilion, Kettering Recreation Complex, and Delco Park. In response to an increase in electricity rates, city staff prepared to help residents. Because Ohio's utility market is deregulated, every utility goes to auction on an annual basis. As the 2022 auction closed for AES Ohio, we learned electric rates would consequently increase. As a result, 14 municipalities joined to offer residents and small businesses a 28-month contract with Energy Harbor at a rate significantly lower than the current AES Ohio rate. Residents enjoyed significant reductions in their bills beginning in October. If successful, the program could save residents up to $360 per year. The program will likely grow as voters in additional communities authorize their city to participate in aggregation. The city has a full-time compliance and inclusion manager who serves all city departments. The manager works with the Americans with Disabilities Advisory Committee to address citywide access and inclusion matters. The city fully supports access and inclusion for individuals with disabilities to participate in programs, events, enrichment opportunities, and camps throughout the city. In 2023, larger accessible swings were installed at area parks in response to the needs of growing children. The city plans to install an adult changing table at the Kettering Recreation Center in 2024 to assist those with disabilities or mobility issues with funding from the Montgomery County Board of Developmental Disabilities. In 2023, the city council launched an ambitious effort to update the city's strategic plan called Spark Kettering. City Council appointed a 30-member steering committee and engaged staff, residents, and businesses with the goal of creating a community-informed strategic plan that will guide Kettering for at least the next five years. This year-long process brought people together to develop strategies to accomplish important goals. The new plan will kick off in 2024. In 2023, the City of Kettering moved senior services to our government center at 3600 Troyer Road. This creates a one-stop scenario for residents needing senior assistance, crisis intervention services, and community development programs. Senior Services Coordinator Natalie Storms personally assists Kettering seniors in need. Natalie advocates for seniors and helps bring appropriate resources to them for improved quality of life. Natalie assisted 272 residents this year with over 1,000 resident contacts through phone calls and home visits.
And one of the best things I've done so far is help a 71-year-old lady who was having severe dementia and couldn't live independently anymore in independent living here in Kettering in one of our apartment buildings. And I got to work with her and get her Medicaid, and work with ARIAN Aging and other organizations to make sure we got her assisted living, and now she's living safely and securely.
We're Kettering. Of course we offer programs to enhance quality of life for everyone.
The City of Kettering is committed to supporting residential development to ensure families looking for affordable homes with modern amenities have options in Kettering. The importance of reinvestment also extends to our residential areas. We're proud of our stable and attractive neighborhoods. A well-kept neighborhood says that residents take pride in their community. With pride comes value, beauty, and a great image for our city. The Community Development Division will continue to facilitate programs for providing quality housing to Kettering homeowners, and education opportunities for foreclosure prevention and homeownership. The city has provided assistance stabilizing households and improving neighborhoods through homebuyer assistance, emergency repairs, and comprehensive updates for over 40 years. The city offers low-cost loans of 0% or 1% with low or no payments depending on demonstrated need. The repaid funds can be recycled in the future to assist more homeowners. The Planning and Development Department wrapped up the Stay Put Tenant Assistance Program in 2023. Using funds from Montgomery County and Kettering Municipal Courts, the City of Kettering implemented a program for residents negatively impacted from the COVID-19 pandemic. Kettering assisted 1,434 households and distributed almost $6,651,000 in rental assistance, allowing renters to stay in their homes. Kettering offers other programs to assist residents as well. We served 15 households with first-time homebuyer assistance. 19 residents received assistance with emergency repairs. The City of Kettering assisted with construction and upgrades for many businesses, including a new Chase Bank locating at the corner of Dorothy Lane and Woodman Drive, Nova Trampoline Park located at the former Mark's Store in Oak Creek, and TJ Chumps new location at Stroop and Marshall. The major remodel of the Town and Country Kroger store, remodel of a business for New Jimmy John's on Wilmington Pike, and new construction of Taco John's and Flying Ace Car Wash near Meyer. During 2024, the city will continue assisting several new businesses locating in Kettering, including the Blueberry Cafe at the former Golden Nugget Restaurant location, and Slovita in the Kettering Business Park. Planning and Development runs a strong property maintenance program, working with residents and businesses to properly maintain their properties. We provide direct assistance in working with residents and businesses to realize their dreams of remodeling and expanding their homes and businesses so they are safe and their investment is secure. The City of Kettering is planning a pilot program aimed at creating more in-home childcare options. A study by 4C for Children found that there are only a few state-licensed residential childcare sites in Kettering. An in-home care site is required to have an Ohio license to house more than six children. 4Cs for Children provides childcare resources for 15 counties in southwest Ohio. State-licensed in-home centers can accept publicly-funded childcare vouchers. City Council approved $100,000 in community development block grant funds to help create more sites while giving working families more childcare options.
We're Kettering. Of course our volunteers are like family.
The City of Kettering Volunteer Program celebrated its 44th year of service in 2023. Our volunteers are truly the essence of Kettering's community spirit, and we're grateful to have them on our team. Kettering has one of the largest volunteer programs in the nation, and it's because of our residents who take their commitment to serving our community to the next level. Their leadership is crucial, and their input is vital. Ranging in age from 14 to 80, there's something for everyone. Thank you to each and every one of our volunteers. In 2023, a new category was introduced as part of the Treasured Neighborhood Pride Program emphasizing sustainable landscaping practices to align with our sustainability goals. Our volunteers are responsible for the expansion of the rain garden installed at Van Buren Park, supported by funding through Keep Montgomery County Beautiful, and volunteer help on National Make a Difference Day.
We're Kettering. Keeping you safe is our number-one priority.
I'm Chief Protsman. The men and women of the Kettering Police Department continue to work hard around the clock to protect the citizens of Kettering. Our agency has three areas of accreditation, including our jail, our dispatch center, and overall law enforcement. Accreditation does not tell us how to run our police department. It is there to ensure that our agency runs well. During 2023, the Training Center was completed. This facility includes a 49-person classroom, a virtual simulator to help officers prepare for real-life incidents, and a computer forensics lab. With the help of the Miami Valley Communications Council, member cities including Kettering welcome the arrival of the Lingco Bearcat G3, the newest member of the Kettering Regional Special Response Team's vehicle fleet. This rescue vehicle will help ensure the safety of the regional SWAT team members and the citizens in the communities they serve. Our officers immerse themselves in their community, interacting with people of all ages. Our five school resource officers interact with schoolchildren every day. The RAG Kids Program will once again be offered to Kettering children to help with self-defense. We have been fortunate to hire nine patrol officers, two dispatch supervisors, and two dispatchers this year. We celebrated the promotions of one captain, a lieutenant, and two sergeants. We bid farewell to six officers who retired, as well as K-9 Jacks, whose role was taken over by K-9 Bolt and his handler, Officer Harper.
We're Kettering. For us, it's all about the people we serve.
The Kettering Fire Department responded to 9,372 calls for service during 2023. Two career firefighter paramedics, A.J. Bacon and Kent Dillinger, were promoted to the rank of fire captain. Both of their former positions were filled. Brian Beaver was promoted from battalion chief to assistant chief. Retirements included three firefighter paramedics, two fire captains, and one assistant fire chief. Collectively, the retirees represented 150 years of service to the Kettering Fire Department. We currently have five vacancies in the career firefighter paramedic position and anticipate being fully staffed in early 2024. The Fire Prevention Bureau completed over 775 annual fire inspections and over 500 re-inspections. Fire inspections now include the common areas of multifamily dwellings to ensure that life safety requirements are met. The Fire Department received one staff car in 2023 and expect delivery of two new medic units with power cots mid-2024. We are also excited to receive a new fire engine from E1 in early 2024 to be placed at Fire Station 37. The current engine at Station 37 will be placed in reserve, allowing us to retire a 1997 KME fire engine. This past year has been reflective of the service and dedication of firefighter paramedic Tracy Leach, who passed away at the end of 2022 from occupational cancer. Her untimely death was considered line of duty by the fire service. She was honored at the National Fire Academy in Emvitsburg, Maryland, the International Association of Firefighters Fallen Firefighter Memorial Wall in Colorado Springs, Colorado, and the Miami Valley Firefighter EMS Association Program in Centerville.
To Kettering residents and business owners...
To Kettering residents and business owners, thank you for choosing to call Kettering home. City of Kettering employees are here to help ensure our community remains the best in the region. In addition to the departments we've already heard from in this State of the City address, let's take a few minutes to spotlight the others. Your Public Service Department and Parks Division applied 2,415 tons of salt, 5,250 gallons of beet heat, and 16,617 gallons of brine to city streets to keep our roadways safe during the 2022-2023 winter season. The Public Service Department's Street Division collected almost 8,000 tons of leaves, and the Yard Debris Center collected 621 tons of yard waste from over 18,000 vehicles to produce 2,138 tons of compost and mulch for use in our parks and residents' landscaping beds and gardens. Your Parks Recreation and Cultural Arts Department maintains 21 beautiful parks, offers live music and community events at the beloved Frazze Pavilion, helps keep our community healthy and engaged at our Recreation Center, Kettering Wellness and Fitness Center, the ICE Arena, and the Charles Lathrum Senior Center. We inspire artists throughout the region at the Rosewood Arts Center and coordinate your most memorable events at Pollan Farm. Like most organizations, the City of Kettering has its own human resources, law, finance, and administrative system departments. These departments play a crucial role in every city project. And finally, the Kettering Municipal Court is working to expand their online functionality for filing court papers in 2024. City of Kettering public servants never stop finding ways to help improve quality of life for our citizens. It is a privilege to serve and engage our community.
We're Kettering. Of course, we're here to serve our residents, visitors, and patrons.
Thank you for making Kettering your home. Our city offers great schools, wonderful parks, unmatched recreation programs, and immeasurable community spirit. We are proud of the services and traditions we offer, and we will always consider new initiatives and resources for our residents, businesses, and patrons. In 2024, I hope you will consider the ways you or someone you know might get involved in a leadership role in the Kettering community. Everyone has a talent, and together, we are unstoppable. Our Kettering Leadership Academy and our various city boards and commissions are frequently looking for new members. These are great opportunities to learn more about the city and create a path to additional leadership opportunities. Be assured that all of us on Kettering City Council and your city administrators are dedicated to serving you and to ensuring you remain proud to say Kettering is home. May you and your families be healthy and prosperous in 2024. And on behalf of City Council and staff, thank you for allowing us to serve you. God bless.
We are Kettering.
Thank you, everyone who played a part in producing that and saying hello. We are Kettering. And sometimes, you know, those of us who deal with these issues day in and day out need to be reminded of the special things in this community. So, thank you. Thank you so much. We will now move along on our agenda, our regular agenda. At this point, people are invited to come down and talk about any of the legislation that will be under consideration today. If you are interested in doing this, you just need to come to the podium, give us your name, address, and tell us what's on your mind. We will limit it to five minutes. And is there anyone here who wishes to? Okay. Okay. I need to read it verbatim. Okay. Anyone wishing to speak before council with comments or new information about the legislation on tonight's agenda may do so at this time. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. Speakers must state their name and address. Comments should be addressed to council. If you have comments that are not about the legislation on tonight's agenda, there will be an opportunity for those to be heard later in the evening. Sounded like what I was going to say, but anyway. Anyone interested in coming down and addressing council tonight? Okay, doesn't sound like anyone is. If you wish to speak about an issue not related to legislation, we'll do that later in the program. Let's see. We'll now move to ordinances and second reading, and there are none this evening. We'll move to resolutions, and I'd like to call on Mr. Sullivan to introduce the first resolution.
All right. Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into and implement a collective bargaining agreement with the Kettering Unit Public Service Union Local 101, Ohio Council 8, AFSMI AFL-CIO, which is consistent with a tentative agreement reached by the bargaining teams. This is requested by Human Resources Department. I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Greason.
Yes, Your Honor. I'm going to turn this over to Jenny Smith, our Human Resources Director. She's going to overview the good work that was done on this collective bargaining agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Greason. Your Honor, thank you. We are requesting tonight legislation authorizing the city manager to enter into and implement a collective bargaining agreement with AFSMI, which is consistent with the tentative agreement reached by the bargaining teams. And I'd like to take just a moment to thank the bargaining team, city and AFSMI, some of which are in attendance tonight in the audience, so I want to thank them for coming tonight, taking time out of their evening. The tentative agreement that the parties reached includes a three-year collective bargaining agreement with a wage pattern of 3.25% in year one, 3% in year two, and 2.75% in the third year of the contract. Tendative agreement also includes an increase in the tool allowance from $250 to $400 a year. It includes an increase in the boot vouchers from $175 to $200 a year. It decreases the time in between steps in the pay grades from 12 months to nine months. It provides insurance flexibility to the city. It includes universal changes to pronouns to remove any gender-specific references and general cleanup and clarification of the contract. Be happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions for? Okay, please call the roll.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Mr. Sudif?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing acceptance of a donation for a television and related apparatuses from the Kettering Park Foundation. The estimated cost is $700. The amount budgeted is not there, but I think that means it's a gain of $700. And this is being requested by Parks Recreation and Cultural Arts. I move for approval.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Greason.
Yes, Your Honor. As was stated, the Kettering Parks Foundation always supports, in small and large ways, our Parks Recreation and Cultural Arts program. In this case, they're donating the funds for a television wall mount and connectors to be used in the Olive Concert Conference Room. As stated, it was valued at $700.
Okay, thank you. Anyone have any questions? All right, call the roll.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Mr. Sudif?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to apply for a recreational trails program grant from the Ohio Department of Natural Resources. The amount of the grant is $150,000, 37,500 contribution from the city. The total, 187,500, and the amount budgeted is $200,000 and is requested by Parks and Cultural Arts Department. I do move for approval.
Second.
Okay, I believe that's...
Thank you, Your Honor. The city is seeking reimbursement from the Ohio Department of Natural Resources through the recreational trails program grant fund for the renovation and construction of accessible path and trail improvements at Pondview Park. The total grant requested will not exceed $150,000, and there is a required 20% match by the city. Be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions? Okay. Hearing none, call the roll.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Mr. Sudif?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to accept reimbursement from the Ohio Attorney General's Office for police officer training costs. The estimated cost is $92,863.39. The amount budgeted is zero. This is requested by the police department. I move for approval.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved to the seconded.
Yes, Your Honor, this will allow me to accept $92,863.39, as was stated, from the Attorney General's Office. This is for the reimbursement of required continued professional training of our police officers, and so they'll reimburse training that occurred in 2023. And then we'll use the funds to, for future continuing professional training that is necessary to have Ohio's finest.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Calling, hearing none, call the roll.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Mr. Sudif?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase television, radio, newspaper, billboard, and internet advertising for the 2024 Frazze Pavilion performance season from various sources. The amount of, the estimated cost is $134,000. The same as the budgeted. This is requested by the Parks Recreation and Cultural Arts Department, and I move for approval.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Brinkstetter.
Thank you, Your Honor. This resolution and the next four are in relation to the upcoming Frazze Pavilion performance season. So this first one is authorizing the city to purchase essentially advertising from various television, radio, newspaper, billboard, and internet advertising sources. We would like to not use, or we'd like to use direct purchasing for this, for these activities due to a competitive, the competitive nature is not appropriate for this type of purchase since these sources have fixed rates for advertising. Happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions? Okay, hearing none, call the roll.
Mr. Sudif?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Mr. Sudif?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to negotiate and enter into contracts for entertainment for the Frazze Pavilion 2024 performance season. The estimated cost and the amount budgeted is $2,800,000. This is requested by Parks Recreation and Cultural Arts Department. I move for approval.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Brinkstetter.
Thank you, Your Honor. Fairly self-explanatory on this one. This resolution will allow us to actually contract and have performers for the Frazze Pavilion season. We're estimating approximately $2.8 million in this year's budget. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Call the roll.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Mr. Sudif?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to contract for rental of musical and performance-related backline equipment on a show-by-show and as-needed basis for the Frazze Pavilion 2024 season. Estimated cost, $40,000. That is the amount budgeted and is requested by Parks Recreation and Cultural Arts. I move for approval.
Second.
The move is seconded. Mr. Brinkstetter.
Thank you, Your Honor. Also, if you're going to have a performing arts season, you need to pay music licensing fees for the music you're providing at the pavilion. So this resolution will authorize the payment of those licensing fees for the entertainment that is provided. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, seeing none, call the roll.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Mr. Sudif?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Mr. Sudif?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to contract for rental of musical and performance-related backline equipment, so thank lighting and speakers and things like that. The city contracts with Jonas Productions located in Indianapolis due to the lack of a supplier or contractor here locally in the Miami Valley. Be happy to answer any questions.
Seeing none, call the roll.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Mr. Sudif?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into agreements for discounts, complimentary tickets, and complimentary program participation to benefit the advertising and promotion of calendar year 2024 Parks Recreation and Cultural Arts programs in the 2024 Frazze Pavilion performance season. There is no cost, and this is requested by Parks Recreation and Cultural Arts Department. I move for approval.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Mr. Brinkstetter?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yep, last one. Thank you. The, this resolution will allow the city to discount or provide complimentary tickets or program participation as part of our advertising and promotion processes within the Parks Recreation and Cultural Arts programs and the 2024 Frazze Pavilion season. Very, very important to note that city staff nor city council are eligible for these discounted tickets or programs. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, anyone have questions? Call the roll.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Mr. Sudif?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution to appoint Shane Sullivan and Bob Scott as trustees of the Kettering Development Corporation. This is requested by the city manager's office, and I do move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved to the seconded.
Yes, Your Honor. Just briefly, I want to talk about the Kettering Development Corporation's mission. Its mission is to support and improve the community's future through redevelopment of commercial and residential properties in the City of Kettering. The city council has the opportunity to appoint some positions, individuals to positions on the Kettering Development Corporation. And those appointments are for terms of office effective January 1, 2024, so we're a little behind, through December 31 of 2025. It's being recommended that Mr. Sullivan and Mr. Scott be those trustees.
Okay, thank you. Do you have a question?
I have a question. It's a little procedural. Should Mr. Sullivan and Mr. Scott vote on this? Is there a rule about that?
I think it's fine if they vote on it. They're not going to be enriching themselves by voting on it. I don't think there's any kind of ethical problem with doing that. But thank you for asking.
Just wanted to be short.
We're just going to make them spend their time.
Right.
Thank you. Thank you.
Go ahead and call the roll.
Mr. Sudif?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to contract for emergency home repair services with Miami Valley Community Action Partnership. The estimated cost and the funds available is $75,000. This is requested by the Planning and Development Department. I move for approval.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Greason.
Yes, Your Honor. As you heard in the State of the City, our Community Development Division works to provide emergency home repair services for low-to-moderate-income Kettering residents. One of our partners in that is the Miami Valley Community Action Partnership. They've actually had some staffing increases and are now able to serve more clients. And so this proposal will support serving at least 10 clients with repair costs not to exceed $7,500 per client. Be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Does anyone have any? Okay, seeing none, call the roll.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Your honor, I have a resolution to make supplemental appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Kettering, State of Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2024. I move for approval.
Second.
Okay, and, uh, Mr. Greason?
Uh, yes, your honor. Um, these are the supplemental appropriations for the items that you approved earlier in the evening. The first is the $700 for the PRCA, uh, television, the donation for the Kettering Parks Foundation. So we need to appropriate the funds to accomplish that project. And then the second is $92,863.39. That's the supplemental appropriation, um, that allows us to accept the, uh, State of Ohio funds for police officer, uh, training. That's the reimbursement that will then use the funds for, for future training. Glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Anyone have any? Okay, seen none, call the roll.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Mr. Sudif?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Um, yes. Okay. Um, that concludes our resolutions for this evening. Um, we have no ordinances in first reading. So we'll move to certifications and petitions. Uh, I'd like to call on Chana Kaczynski.
Your honor, we do not have any certifications or petitions this evening.
Okay, thank you. Well, now move to the city manager's report.
Yes, your honor.
Matt? Mark?
Just, uh, briefly, I want to, before I get into our community update, um, I do want to thank both the bargaining teams, uh, our staff and, well, everyone is our staff, but, uh, the AFSMI representatives and our team members, uh, that Jenny led. Um, we appreciate the collaborative effort and the opportunity to complete, the contract for the next three years. So, good job to everyone. I'd like to, uh, highlight once again, blood pressure clinic dates. So it's important to get your blood pressure taken every once in a while. And we offer clinics, um, at our local library, and the dates are on the screen in times. We encourage people to attend that. Volunteerism is important, as we heard in the state of the city in Kettering. And so we want to highlight that the Board of Community Relations is seeking one adult and one youth volunteer member, uh, to serve. And applications can be sent, uh, to the Kettering Government Center or emailed, uh, to the email that's on the screen. And the deadline is March 1st. Ms. DuVall, would you want to add anything about that? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Sudif? Would you want to add anything about that?
No, I did not.
Okay. Um, we're at the time of the year where the Yard des Breez Center is, uh, going to be open. It opens March 4th, and our regular hours are Monday through Friday, 3 to 8, Saturday, 9 to 3. And with the warm weather, I can tell you, I will be taking advantage of, uh, this service. And I encourage everyone else to. It's a wonderful service that, uh, the City of Kettering offers to its residents. The number on the screen, uh, people could call if they need additional information. March is Women's History Month, and the Kettering Board of Community Relations encourages you to learn more about women's history this month and anytime because Kettering is home to all of us. One of the programs that we highlighted in State of the City and that we're proud of is our micro-enterprise program. Uh, the Spring 2024 Class of the Micro-Enterprise Basic Course is, um, starting soon in April. And there are a number of courses that we will be offering. Uh, How to Work with the City, Record Keeping for Small Businesses, um, Working with Financial Institutions, and then Lessons Learned from Experienced Entrepreneurs. Um, we encourage people who are interested, uh, particularly entrepreneurs, businesses in operation two or more years to, uh, look into our excellent micro-enterprise assistance program. We have Free Fridays coming up, and, uh, if you're interested in group exercise and want to try it out, uh, Friday, March 1st, um, for the first Friday of each month, all group exercise classes at the Kettering Recreation Complex will be free of charge. We want people to stop in and experience our fun, friendly, energetic, uh, and expertly taught, fat-burning group exercise classes. The class schedule, uh, will vary each day and, uh, in each month, and, uh, will be available online at playkettering.org. Uh, but we certainly encourage you to, uh, try out our incredible group exercise classes. I know summer camps are important, uh, to many of our families here in Kettering, and, um, uh, we hope that everyone is ready for our outstanding summer camps. So, registration is coming up soon. I believe, uh, registration starts, um, uh, March 4th for residents and then March 11th for non-residents. We are taking nominations for the 41st year of the Mayor's Award until March 11th. And so if you know an outstanding volunteer that deserves recognition, uh, we encourage you, uh, to make a nomination, uh, by, uh, calling or emailing, uh, with the information on the screen. And lastly, uh, it's tax season. And, um, we encourage you to file early. Um, your City of Kettering income tax return is due on Monday, April 15th, 2024. Um, our staff, uh, is available to assist residents in preparing their taxes. We encourage them to take advantage of that excellent service. They can contact the Tax Division Office by calling the number on the screen or visit the North Building here at 3600 Shroyer Road. Uh, our excellent staff will be glad to help assist anyone in their City of Kettering income tax return filing. Your honor, that's all I have this evening.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. And let the record show that that report was given by Matt Greason and not Mark.
Fair enough.
Fair enough. Thank you very much. I will now turn to, um, council reports, and we will start with, um, Mr. Sullivan. Okay. That public comments keeps slipping in there. Anyone wishing to speak before council with comments or new information? That's the wrong one. Um, about legislation, tonight's agenda may do so at this time. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. Speakers must state their name and address. Comments should be addressed to council. This is only for non-legislative-related, um, information. If you have comments that are not about the legislation on tonight's agenda, there were, um, this is now your opportunity to be, to be heard. So, anyone wish to speak? Looking up there at our union members, I, I wanted to add that, uh, thanks for, for making the process so enjoyable. And Jenny seemed quite pleased with it, so appreciate that. Um, I had a couple of other things I wanted to talk about. On March 7th at 5:00 PM at the Kettering Rec Center, you are invited to join us for a tour of the city via the RTA. Um, as was mentioned in the film tonight, um, RTA changed their, uh, service in Kettering to provide an east-west sort of connector. The past services just went up and down, north and south. You had to go downtown to transfer, um, to get to another area in Kettering. Uh, this new service was put in a couple of months ago. Ridership is not where we would like to see it. Um, people aren't used to looking to the RTA to get them around town. Um, and this is really a, a wonderful program that's been put in effect. But if we don't use it, they won't keep it. So, we're inviting people to try to ride the RTA. I think you'll be surprised how pleasant it is. And you are welcome to join council and a couple of other people, um, in sort of their trial tour. So, um, 5 o'clock, 5 o'clock, March 7th at the Rec Center. You can get on and off. You don't have to stay the full 40 minutes. But we're gonna have fun, so hope you do it. Um, let's see. I think that's all I had for tonight. I jumped ahead of everyone else. Yeah.
I'll take, I'll take my turn. Um, I just wanted to say, I love Kettering parks, and I love people using the parks, and I love crazy Ohio weather. And like, in a week's span, I saw kids sledding at Ireland Park by my house, and then like, in shorts, uh, on the playground a couple of days later. So, it's good seeing people use it in all those different ways. But that's it for me.
So, what do you think to be excited about tonight with our state of the city? It's just really a city that people can be proud to live in and love the, um, continued excellence of our financial department and our parks. And I especially am excited about what we accomplished together to get this new bus route that was so needed. And, um, the childcare centers, I, I really appreciate a lot. Really happy to see, um, some union members here in the audience, and you guys do so much to make our city great as well. Happy about this legislation that passed and the good work that the city did with you in getting everything negotiated. One thing I wanted to mention was that, uh, two grocery stores that we have in the community, um, one in Kettering, one not in Kettering, that are also underutilized but really need, uh, people to be there in order to keep the grocery stores there. So, uh, people in the neighborhoods that really need them there, that don't, don't have transportation can use them. One is the mobile grocery store in Kettering where, um, Mark's used to be across the street in the apartment buildings that comes on Wednesdays, I believe. Um, uh, Homeful has it on their website. And if you get a chance to shop in the mobile grocery store, it's really an excellent, uh, grocery store, has everything you would need. Fascinating situation in the, in the semi that builds out into a grocery store and, um, want to keep that there for the residents. And then the second one is Gem City Market, which, uh, Hall Hunger also worked on to, uh, get started in a pretty extreme food desert in Dayton. Our family and I enjoy shopping there once a week. And, um, it's a shareholders-owner-owned grocery store. And, um, would just encourage people to think about shopping there on occasion and supporting the community and keeping that going as well. Thanks so much for, uh, yep, that's it. I started to think I was doing, uh, some of my campaigning stuff. But I'm not. But do you want to encourage everyone to vote? Early voting started, and, um, appreciate the time.
Okay, thank you.
Um, first of all, I want to thank, uh, city staff for the excellent job that was done for the presentation. I thought it was very well done. Um, I also want to take notice, uh, I had the privilege to go to the STEM School a week ago Friday for some senior presentations of these young folks who have shown their growth over their career at STEM School. These were high school seniors, but they sounded like college seniors in how advanced they were in their background. So, I know it's a regional school, but it's in Kettering, and I think they do a great job there. And lastly, this is a leap year, uh, which means there's 29 days in February. So you've got one extra day to shop Kettering.
I have no update tonight. Thanks.
Okay. What? Mr. Sudif, that's up to you.
Are you sure?
I'm keeping it brief for y'all. You're welcome.
I, I actually don't much. I just wanted to, just to, uh, last week I had the opportunity to attend the event, the Dayton National Cemetery, uh, out on West 3rd with the Final Slute Society. I was joined by, uh, Kettering residents Jim and Leslie Groves